Let's back into open session. Other members here, the administration. Piece, I will ask, I see Lake Cam is here recording the meeting. Anybody else recording the meeting? Okay, I need you to come up and state your name and the town you're from, please, so we can have it on the record here. Yeah, they know to have it recorded on Lake Cam because it's microphone. Okay?
I'm Kayla Churchill from Freetown, Mass.
Thank you very much, Kayla.
Thank you.
All right, I see Angela Kayla's here, recognize that. All right, everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to item number six on the agenda, a superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. In front of you, you have our class size update with April 1st numbers. As of April 1st, 2,757 students. 69 students as of 3:30 are being homeschooled. I want to reiterate again my thanks to the school committee and to Cheryl Estrella for working so collaboratively on next year's calendar as it relates to the election cycle. It's been a concern over the years and the collaboration will help our students and staff stay safe while continuing to use FES for all of our elections. School choice, the application deadline is tomorrow, April 6th. Currently, we have 13 applications as of today. Transportation, we've had lots of conversation in regards to transportation. I wanted to let everybody know that after a few years of struggle with our bus students at both AES and FES in particular, in terms of them getting to school late, that Ken Rozendes and his team have worked diligently to fix the issue. And for the first time in a few years, students are arriving to school on time and able to get breakfast. Previously, students were arriving 10 to 15 minutes late and then would get their breakfast and obviously would miss a significant portion of class each morning. So I want to thank the bus company for doing their duty diligence to get this fixed. We certainly know that we have work to do in the afternoon in terms of getting kids home a little bit earlier. We did have a meeting with Ken recently, Kara, myself, Steve, and Ken regarding the reduction of a bus. The conversation was positive and he's going to run numbers and come back with a proposal to us as soon as possible. There was a conversation a few weeks ago, I do appreciate Lake Cam being here tonight. I was asked for IT to get quotes on a potential when Lake Cam cannot be here. After going through multiple scenarios with both Craig and Ryan, the most effective and practical program is a program called the Pearl Mini System. And some of this may not make sense, but it has 13 mics, mixing boards, and two cameras. It can be streamed to Facebook and to YouTube. It's similar to, but varies much smaller, so I do not want to insult anybody, but it's similar to the version of what Lake Cam has. What we do have to understand is that we would also need to create a stipend to run the system for somebody to be able to run it. It is not something that can just be done by itself. So the cost of the system is $11,000 plus whatever we determine the stipend to be. So that's all of the information I have. I didn't know if there were questions on that. Questions on that?
No, just on the bus topic.
Yep.
I know there was concerns in the committee about the reduction of the bus. We did articulate that, so it wasn't just a you got to get rid of a bus type thing. So the ask is to what do the routes look like with 23 buses? Give us a recommendation, not based upon bus count, but also bell times, right? Because that plays into that example. And also trying to, the goal here is to build a foundation for the next few years, you know, knowing what happens when the train comes in, what all these other factors and that. So they were very much supportive of that. Do you want to just briefly talk about the safety piece, which I think is an important item from a bus perspective? So one of the things that was brought up, and I think it's important to articulate here is Ken and his staff, from a safety perspective, is third in the country, right? That's a big accomplishment here, which puts forward that student safety on the buses is key, right, for it. I said he doesn't market that clearly enough, right?
Right.
And he was a little bit humbled by it, not something he wanted to brag about it, but I think it's an important factor. A lot of things go into that, so I do think it's to thank Ken and his team and more importantly, the bus drivers, right? So those are the pieces.
Yeah, I think it's important in regard to that safety ranking that everybody has to understand that buses have what I would call black boxes that determine how fast they go, how hard they break. All of those things are recorded in every bus ride and it goes back to, in this case, first student, not just Kenny, but all of first student, which then begins to rank and then that all goes to national ranking, which is great.
The last piece I'll bring up on that, I know there was some questions about the buses stopping at the side of the road and what they're doing, right? So I think there was a few instances where there was excessive period of time and I think we've corrected those. But each bus has to stop after every route to make sure there's no sleeping children in the bus or what have you. So we will see them either in a parking lot or what have you, where the goal is they do a sweep before, after the high school run, before they get to Grace, then all the way down to the elementary school.
One of the other things to keep in mind, and I know parents have said it to me, there are only nine kids on the high school bus. We have to provide a seat as a regional district for every student in our district, whether or not they ever take it. Now, we are talking with other regional districts to see what's happening under the mile and a half as to whether or not they're actually charting that. That's a different set of students, but if we run with four students, that's what we have to run with, unfortunately. The Safer Schools Grant, which we have talked about a number of times. We received word this morning that 136 districts applied for a total of $14 million in requests when only $3 million is appropriated. Our grant request is $150,000 for vestibules and cameras. Mid-May is now the target date. Senator Rogaritz has been very helpful and he remains very hopeful. I spoke with him this morning, so that's a positive. Last, but not least, and Ashley is going to get into this in far more detail, in terms of the DESI Students Services site visit, which took place. It is a four-year site visit, correct?
Uh, maybe three years.
Three-year site visit.
It's a mid-cycle.
In this case, the years were from actually July 2018 to July 2022. DESI comes in, looks at all of our special services, looks at all of our numbers, and then writes a year, an annual report. It's real important to understand a few things. During this time period from July 8, 2018 to July 2022, our ELL numbers, our English Language Learners population, has doubled. Our Hispanic population has increased by 30%. Our Black population has almost doubled from 38 students to 73 students. It is above that, from what we understand, but we are only using DESI numbers right now for this report. And as a district, which continues to value the well-being of every student, we must understand the needs of a changing demographic. DESI is going to look for a very detailed report on what we are doing to support this increase. I want you to, I want everybody to hear that after a recent concerning incident at the high school, I received a call from Rene Ledbetter, who is the president of the NAACP, who wanted to talk about how we positively could work together for all students, not one particular group of students. Our conversation, which included the high school administration, school committee, myself, and a family within the community, was kind and collaborative and not confrontational. We, as two wonderfully supportive communities, must come together for all of our students. The committee heard all five school improvement plans at the beginning of the year and will be hearing them again in updates in the end of April. And all five spoke of the need to ensure belonging and a sense of community. At this time, I've asked Rene Ledbetter to speak very briefly to the committee about our meeting. Welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. So as Superintendent Strauss said, my name is Rene Ledbetter and I am the president of the NAACP New Bedford Branch, but I'm also a grandmother of a student in the Freetown School System. So I'm not only invested as an advocate for those that are marginalized, but I'm also an advocate for my grandchild as well. We, like Superintendent Strauss said, we received a call from a family and there are concerns where their children were being racially, being attacked racially, and there were racial things being said to them. We're in 2023. Although racism has evolved, it's not over. Racism does still exist and there's a lot that we have to learn. So it's kind of like if you picture a plate of food and your mother tells you to eat all the food and you move it around the plate to make it look like you did, but the food's still there regardless, right? So racism is still there. The fact that our students in the public school system, whether here or anywhere else, of Black and Brown, especially here because they're the minority, and the school system need to feel safe in their school system. So we have offered to work with Superintendent Strauss to provide training, whether it's diversity equity, racial equity inclusion, to train the students, the faculty, staff, school committee, open your eyes a little bit about what's really happening and how people feel when they are being discriminated against. It's not a good feeling to have young people in school not able to identify with anyone, but to be targeted every single time there's some type of racial thing going on. So we are excited to collaborate with Freetown Elementary Schools, if you are willing to collaborate with the NAACP. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's important to understand that the key in all of this is collaboration and not confrontation. I want to thank Rene and, you know, everybody who's come forward. We have work to do. This is not isolated to us. We have work to do for all of our students. Every single one of our 2,757 students, we have to support in a particular way. And everybody's needs are very different. And that is our goal, that is our mission, and we will continue to do that work.
Any questions for either this Ledbetter or Superintendent Strauss? Okay. Item number seven, the acceptance of minutes. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes from March 15th.
So moved.
I have a motion, but I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention?
Same.
Moving on to the minutes for March 22nd. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes for March 22nd.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Same.
I have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Lastly, 29th, I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention?
Spends.
Just a clock of change, okay? Yes.
Before we move on, if you could add in the minutes for next time. I will be leaving at 7:30 to observe Passover tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, other presentation to school committee, ELL curriculum.
And while they're preparing.
ELA curriculum.
While they're preparing, I would like to introduce, at least give a wave to our new interim finance director, Deirdre Farrell. She will be joining us soon.
In front of each of you is some materials to glance through as our stellar team is presenting information. You have the core units for our top two curriculum choices for sixth through eighth grade ELA, Amplify ELA, and behind each one is a sample of the structure of the unit. And then EL Education is the second one that's in the packet. And again, it just, it is a summary of the units and then a look at the planning documents. Okay, yeah, we'll get into a little more on those, but that's what you're looking at. There are, throughout, there's a sample of a student writing workbook and the actual learning notebook that goes with each unit. Those are out there and then some materials that are from the program that are mostly sales type of material, so it explains some of the technology involved and the format and the layout and the reasoning behind it. Those are, there's three sets of those out there. Okay? So my name is Carrie Fleming and I'm the director of curriculum. Just, I'm sure I have a pretty good voice, so if you can't hear me in the back, please let me know. We have worked on, do you want me over here? All right, thanks. We have been working on aligning the sixth through eighth grade ELA curriculum to match our curriculum review cycle with our K-5 program. So K-5 embedded Wonders and has been implementing Wonders this year. We're trying to get our sixth through eighth grade curriculum up on that cycle. So we have had our team, and I can introduce them all now or they can introduce themselves as they come up through the microphones, but it's a representation of our entire middle school. It's sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, special education, our administrator, our principal, our leader, all having a voice and apparent involvement as well. So we have covered what we feel like is all of our bases on having this reviewed. You're going to hear about some student voice that was included in the selection process and so we are excited to bring this presentation to you. Let's see. We went through the process of vetting the program through the DESI curate documents, which allows us to compare. These are all highly ranked. I'm going to hit the next screen. Thanks. Both of the curriculum that we look, are brought forward are highly ranked, so these are the choices for ELA six to eight curriculum. I circled the ones that we reviewed. We spent several nights, several hours, listening to sales presentations and looking at platforms of these products and what we came down to was what we're presenting to you tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to Katie Shidi. She's our curriculum leader at the middle school and she's going to give you all sorts of good information.
Thanks for having us tonight. So I'm Katie Shidi. I am the ELA curriculum leader at the middle school. I also teach eighth grade at the middle school. Throughout this vetting process, we saw many great programs, but Amplify ELA just really stood out to us and it was our clear top choice. We're going to spend some time just going through some of the features of Amplify. It really has everything that we're looking for for grades six through eight. It's a digital platform that is visually engaging and super easy to navigate, both for teachers and students. We're really impressed with their ELA curriculum. Their texts are rich, complex, and diverse. We love that everything is standards-based and grade level-specific to best align our three grade levels, like Wonders is doing for grades K through five. For teachers, it offers lesson planning. It's also very flexible, so we can make lessons our own. It features instructional support, built-in professional development, as well as embedded assessments and immediate feedback opportunities for students. Again, for students, the level of engagement is impressive. Assignments are student-driven and student-focused. Amplify has multiple apps, media tools, videos, some of which you'll see tonight, and a vast library of over 700 titles, all easily accessible by students and teachers in a user-friendly format. Excellent. We loved that everything with Amplify ELA is about the science of reading. Beyond reading comprehension instruction, it has writing and language tasks built into every lesson, like vocabulary, grammar, close reading strategies, et cetera. One of the things we like most about Amplify ELA is the opportunity for academic achievement for all students. My colleagues will expand on this a little bit more, but from English language learners to our struggling readers, to our on-grade level readers, to our readers that are ready for a little push or a challenge, it provides teachers the opportunity to adjust the complexity of texts and assessments easily for equitable access for all students. Those embedded assessments and Amplify's Flex Day activities allow for individual targeted support for all. Here's a look at the core units for each grade level, which you also have as a handout in front of you. Each unit may have a main topic or author or genre, but each has a great deal of variety within it. Each unit offers a wide range of texts, including both classic and modern literature, as well as informational texts. All reading instruction is paired with short writing tasks and also direct writing instruction for longer products and projects with real-world applications. And each lesson provides frequent opportunities for collaboration with classmates for a complete balance of literacy skills. I'm going to hand it off to my colleague Carrie to talk more about Amplify's assessments and reporting.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carrie Giswaldo. I teach sixth grade ELA. And a little bit about the assessments, we were really intrigued with the presenter and what we heard about the different ways to collect data to drive further instruction. The Amplify platform provides thorough access to daily formal and informal assessments with students receiving immediate feedback. This is a program that is built for middle school students and teachers. We also appreciate that teachers receive performance data in real time based on each lesson that is branched out into multiple divisions to show students strengths and areas of improvement with language, reading, and writing. Students are then arranged into recommended groups for targeted instruction based on their area of need. I'm now going to turn it over to my colleague Liz.
Hi, good evening. I'm Liz Reiner and I'm a specialized teacher over at the middle school in grade eight. Another exciting component of Amplify is that reading and writing tasks and assignments are differentiated into six levels designated what the learning strengths and needs of all the students, and I know Katie had alluded to that. So teachers can assign work from only one of the levels to all six of the levels, depending on the needs of the students within a class period. Students who read and write at grade level are given activities aimed to support the reading and understanding of complex text. Assignments for students with learning disabilities include supports such as simplified writing prompts, shortened reading passages, or guiding questions. And assignments at the challenge level are designed for students who read and understand text at their grade level or above easily and fluently. An example is a writing prompt which asks students to find evidence to support both sides of an argument. In addition, our exploration of Amplify revealed features and resources that both support and challenge our English language learners. Carrie will describe these shortly. However, we learned that materials are available in all 11 of our families' home languages, such as Creole, Ukrainian, Polish, and Italian. There are also fun, interactive activities included in Amplify, and Carrie has a slide that will show a glimpse at two of these quests, which are very appealing to middle school students. And quests are designed to meet students where they're at and immerse them in a specific multi-layered topic.
So this is a quest called Myth World, and this is a student view. And this pen is moving up and down, so I'm going to click up here. Now, I haven't done the quest, so I probably should have played with this a little bit beforehand. There's a map. So that's the map. Let's see what the challenge is. We're going to start with Zeus here. Come back later to read more about Zeus. Let's see. I wonder if I have to do something in the book before these come up. I'm sorry, I apologize. Yep. So these are tied to the, these are meant to be given at the end of the units or later in the units as a part of, as a challenge or as a performance task. So because I'm not actually enrolled in the class, I have a feeling that I'm missing part of the process. So our demo doesn't allow me to get all the way into the challenge, but we did see this working. And it's really, as our students are game-based and they tend to be very electronically savvy, more savvy than us most of the time, these will lead to engagement at a level that, as adults, we don't always think about. So I apologize that our demo doesn't get into that, but it's a glance at what that is. And then, oops, oh, thanks, Carrie.
No problem. I'm not here for it. All right, I'm Carrie Bandon. I am a seventh grade ELA teacher at the middle school. And the next slide, I just want to talk a little bit about how Amplify prides itself in diversity, equity, and inclusion. Amplify is a platform where many of our students will be able to see themselves through the diverse characters, texts, and genres available to them. This platform provides a meaningful reflection of different cultures and perspectives, which will allow students to foster curiosity and become more knowledgeable in diverse content and cultures. One great feature that we really wanted to highlight tonight was the accessibility the students will have to their home languages. The platform will accommodate all of the home languages that we service in our district, which is truly exciting and something that we haven't seen before. The students will only need to click a button and their assignment will be in the language of their choice, which is not only beneficial to them, but also their parents at home. Next, I'll quickly speak about the effectiveness of the platform. Based on the research that we've done and the information provided to us, we've found that other middle schools who have used Amplify have improved scores overall. As you can see on the slide provided, some of the biggest gains were that of the Black and Hispanic population. We believe that Amplify is a platform that will allow all of our students, no matter their ethnicity, a chance to flourish and grow academically. Now, I'd like to pass it on to Jack to talk a little bit about teacher support.
So one of the things that we found in our conversations, I certainly am speaking a little bit in the, in the place of the teachers who were able to pilot this in the classrooms, is that it is quite an intuitive platform. It doesn't require a great deal of training to be able to use it, at least to start, but there is quite a significant amount of support that will be provided in order for us to become fluent in its usage early on. But in addition to that, it has multiple steps that you can use, or multiple support tools that you can use, including tutorials, a full library of tutorials that are videos that you're able to watch that'll help you through particular lessons. But then in addition to that, there's also PDFs that go along with it, which step-by-step instructions, depending on sort of your learning style as an educator, what do you want to use as the best tool to learn, what you might be employing, what factor or what particular tool within the system that you might be using.
Yeah, I found this to be one of the most helpful. Yeah, I found this to be one of the most helpful things as we have new teachers. I found this to be one of those helpful things as we have new teachers, because these tutorials, they live in a library, but also when their teachers are planning, it's on the right-hand side of the planning on the platform. So, if we have a new teacher that's unsure of how to run an academic discussion, there's a tutorial tip and a quick video sample of it. So, those pieces and the writing rubics, in addition to those, will help us with new teachers and to bring, like, a collaboration to what our instruction looks like.
Hi, my name is Katie Gallagher. I'm here as the role of the parent representative. So, Amplify has assembled a variety of resources and guides to help caregivers support their students via the Caregiver Link. Using this website that's easily accessed with no login required, caregivers are provided with a clear vision of what their child is learning. An overview is provided of each unit that includes conversation starters to promote discussion and continue learning at home, and is also accessible in many languages. To encourage reading at home, directions for accessing any of the 700-plus books in the library are provided, as are the offerings for additional activities to promote learning beyond the walls of the classroom. A feature of this platform is also mobility, which is important for busy families. Learning can continue via your child's mobile device while they can review their vocabulary and enhance their understanding with independent practice extensions. Our overview of Amplify moved from classroom to community, and now I'll ask Katie Sheedy to come back to the podium to present our next platform, EL Education.
While you do that, can you just explain about the -- what the students, like, some student reactions to the?
Sure. I actually piloted a few lessons in my class. They really liked the -- all the different features, the vocab app. I saw the same screen that they saw, but I had that on the right-hand side, like my teacher instruction going through, a variety of different question types. It prompts them to pair up with a partner, and it just kind of automatically allows for them to input and answer together. Just so many different features they've never seen before. Visually, so easy to use, but also really appealing, the graphics, the directions, easy-click buttons across the top to just click. It was very streamlined and really great feedback from the kids that saw it, the few classes that I did it with. In addition to Amplify ELA, which is our top choice, we also explored EL Education through the Imagine Learning Platform, so we'd just like to share a little bit about that with you tonight. This platform is more of a mix of print and digital, and also offers high-quality literacy instruction with a strong focus on character education. It offers teacher support with lesson-planning tools, authentic and challenging tasks for students with diverse texts, and a wide variety of scaffolds and protocols to help every student achieve. This is a look at the modules that they offer. EL Education is structured into four modules per grade level, and then three units within each of those modules, which would take an entire school year. Each one is about eight to nine weeks. EL Education's foundations are standards-based, and their platform provides teachers with tools and flexibility to build lessons that promote high-quality student work. Students complete a range of tasks and assessments, including projects, essay writing, both independently and through collaboration with peers. Character education is built-in throughout every unit within the modules. I'm going to ask Mr. Higgins to continue more specifically.
Sure. And we can actually just go right past this one, because this is just another screen referencing the fact that there's four modules with three units under each. But one of the elements that is part of this, that we haven't been able to pilot, but we certainly saw this when we're reviewing the curriculum, is the opportunity for cross-curricular content. So, we might be able to have students working in an ELA class on a particular topic that then they are carrying over into their civics class, and maybe even carrying over into their science class, depending on the timing, as well as to whether or not it aligns with the standards, particularly where the teachers are working. That's sort of a few years down the road, being able to create that complex connection, but there is some opportunity for that from what we've been able to gather. The other part that EL prides itself on is that it really focuses on student conversations. The idea is that where learning is going to take place is around teacher-led, student collaboration. So, much of the lesson structures are set around those ideas with clear and simple protocols and conversation cues.
I don't remember why.
It's me. [laughter]
So, the EL Education lessons are designed to help students become ethical learners by taking ownership of their learning, and I think Katie and Jack alluded to that. However, one drawback that we learned during the presentation by the EL Education staff is that the level of text used in the lessons is not necessarily adaptable. Instead, the text is scaffolded. Students are involved in goal-setting for each of the units, and not only do students have the opportunity to self-reflect and review their own work, but they can also offer peer feedback. EL Education also offers supports and challenges for our English-language learners, and more investigation of those features is needed to see if the materials are available in all 11 of our families' languages, or home languages.
I'm sorry. I'll --
Okay, yeah.
It's not built-in for the platform, but it would be a Google Translate type of situation where we'd have to make sure that the documents were translatable that we're using, versus it being embedded in the platform.
Okay, thank you. And Carrie will now share our findings regarding the data reporting.
So, we recognize and appreciate the focus on building background knowledge and learning about the outside world through the eyes of different characters and people in the texts they are reading with this platform. Student voice, like Jack said, is implemented heavily into the content-based learning curriculum. The reporting with this platform is similar to that of iReady, so it would be something that is familiar to us. The data that teachers receive is more on the standards that students are achieving mastery with, along with the standards a majority of students are struggling with. This information would be helpful for grouping, and it does provide suggested ideas for activities that are described for the teacher to then implement into the classroom.
Okay. So, like Amplify, EL Education is another platform that prides itself in diversity, equity, and inclusion. The texts in this program are used as mirrors and windows, giving the students the opportunity to see themselves in the characters represented and learn about other perspectives. This platform also provides a number of ways teachers can differentiate instruction or add extension activities as needed. Next slide, please. We all know the importance of quality professional development when embracing a new curriculum, and with EL Education, they will provide teachers with the support that they need: variety of resources, online professional learning, and, most importantly, a chat feature that allows real-time customer support. This is really helpful for teachers, because they're able to ask questions and get those questions answered immediately, rather than waiting compared to other platforms, where sometimes we have to wait for our next professional development day, which could be weeks or months down the line. So, now I'll pass it off to Katie Gallagher, who is my colleague, but also the parent rep.
So, similar to Amplify, EL Education also promotes the partnership between school and home. With an emphasis on building relationships with families and attention to diversity, this platform highlights communication and inclusion. The teacher will play the central role in initiating and facilitating the family and home connection, with resources such as welcome letters and newsletters. As the website wasn't as easily accessible, a login was required to download the information provided, but once accessed, caregivers could gain insight into their student's curriculum, including the content and skills.
Now, the brass tacks.
Right. So, I don't know if you could tell by quite by the tone of the teachers, but we certainly felt like Amplify is a better fit. It's also cheaper, by the way. So, you can look and see here how the cost breakdown.
Sorry, Steve, I couldn't make it any bigger. I had to fit a lot of my --
That's all right. I have jeans, glasses.
There you go. Yep. You can also walk over there if you need to. So, you can see the breakdown by year, by grade level, and then what the additional resources are, both access to the curriculum, I'm sorry, but access to the digital, as well as to hard copies, student texts, and so forth. You want to jump in?
Sure. So, on the pricing pieces, one of the reasons for the discrepancies was mentioned, that the EL Education does base a lot of its work on -- in text, in text and in writing components that we would have to buy over and over again. So, the ongoing access is $6,701 per year, per grade level, whereas the Amplify, being primarily online, with the print materials being class sets and reusable, has an annual cost of, sorry, $3,503 per year, per grade level. The initial cost of the curriculum we have secured, that's in my report as well, jumping ahead. We did get approved for the High Quality Implementation Grant, so half of the funds for this five-year purchase for Amplify would come from the High Quality Implementation Grant, and the remainder is out of the building budget funds that have been set aside for curriculum, as well as, I'm going to say ESR2, but Kara might correct me. I was double-checking. We had a conversation. It's in one of the ESR funds that we had locked off some curriculum materials.
I will have to --
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to have to check that, Terry.
Sure. Yep. So, that's a five-year. That brings them into line with the ELA K-5 review cycle, and it is quite a cost difference for the two. They're both quality programs. We just happen to like the one that is less expensive. Any questions?
I will let you know that if I just look at this page and this page, so this is the EL and this is the Amplify, my first thought, looking at EL, is that it looks like there's a very good focus on both racial and cultural diversity, as well as things like ecology. But what you did, thankfully, as you drilled down, you did all the heavy lifting to prove that that very much exists in the cheaper program, and I'm very concerned about Google Translate. So, I'm really happy that the home language capability exists in here without an extra step. And other than that, I just wanted to thank you for the in-depth presentation on this. It looks fascinating.
Thank you. And I will share that this was the last presentation that we heard after two -- so, this was six o'clock at night, and we're all tired, and we were like, we thought, you know, in our own heads, we were thinking, oh, we like these two as our top two. And then, it kind of shifted over time, and honestly, EL Education, I'll share, wasn't even on the top list. I kind of poked and prodded because of work that I've done with the English Networking Leadership in the state, and said, hey, this is really being touted by a lot of districts, so can we take another look at it? And once we, like, started to tear things apart, these two did surface, but we do think Amplify is just an extremely highly successful program that could benefit all of our students. So, I think this is our first reading. I think we have to --
Yeah, you get to do it.
And it'll be Jack and I next time, and we won't put our wonderful team through another evening out with us.
I always have a couple of questions, as you know.
I might have to call on somebody behind me.
That's okay.
Okay.
How old is our current ELA?
So, we're -- yeah, we're currently working in -- Jack, you might be able to speak to this more, but we have homegrown units, novel units, that are, we're using, where we have purchased novels and built our units around novels.
Okay.
Which this does --
Around 2017, there was a consultant who came in and worked with the teachers on creating units around novels, and then some of that was completed, some of it was delayed by COVID, and then we've been using that, utilizing that. But it's home-built, what we're currently using.
I'm assuming IT has put a stamp of approval on this, including student data privacy.
Yes. I always send the tech requirements over to them, and once a contract comes through, they review that as well.
Okay. And this is an online platform. Is there an offline version for, like, students that don't have access to internet at home, what have you?
So, one of the things that was addressed is the accessibility. It actually works on a mobile app as well, and I don't know too many of our middle-school kids that don't have a phone, but if that were the case, there are printable materials, yes. And in our first year, we are purchasing the print copy of things. That's part of this initial --
It was more of the not access to the internet at home aspect of it.
Yeah.
And does this include, the annual fee does include, like, the journals that they have here, or no?
So, the journals, we would buy, again, that's in that first, we have the, like, the purchase in the first year of everything. After that, we would have to determine the usefulness of them. We have found that print materials like this tend to be, like, we find that some of them are really gems, right? Like, we go, oh, we want to use this writing assignment, or we want to tweak it. And so, buying a journal for the kids could come in any form. It doesn't have to be in this form.
Doesn't have to be this, yeah.
And if I saw it correctly, roughly about 11K a year over the next five years, as far as the consumables outside of the upfront costs?
Yeah, that's the online access and the, any renewal materials.
Okay.
Steve?
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yep. Just a comment and a question. Two very strong programs, but if I could endorse Amplify, I think your teachers, and you've made a great choice on living through an implementation of that program, and the rich text, the supporting all students, the digital platform, the homeschool connection is all there, but I think Mr. Higgins makes a great comment, too, about the implementation and how user-friendly it is in transition for teachers. But I will say this, the student engagement is off the charts as I walk around classrooms during the day, and the program does a nice job setting up background knowledge, and it sort of spirals with each grade. So, one grade builds onto the other, so certainly an endorsement from me. So, great choice, and great budget choice as well.
Did, last thing, you talked about students that are behind reading. Does it have anything for those students that are excelling?
Yes, yes.
You wouldn't pay attention.
The six, the shapes that were up there, the six shapes, like, really allows for, and that's like every, it's not like you're categorized as that student. It's like, this assignment is a writing assignment, so I'm going to give this one to these students. This one's a reading. I'm going to give this one to these students. So, it's very versatile and flexible in its application of which students get which types of material.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee? For this family, this is our first reading. The next school committee will have our second reading, which will include the vote. So, okay.
Hi, as a parent, I have some questions. Are they going to be here at the end, too?
That's the public participation part, so that you can ask the questions. Okay? Thank you. Which, actually, segment isn't it, so don't go too far, because it's coming up. The public participation's coming up. So, moving on to item nine, is public participation? First of all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. So, item number nine on the agenda is public participation. I would say anybody can come up to the podium, their name, and the town that they are representing or living in. Just to reiterate, the rules are based upon topics on the agenda, and we'd ask that you keep it to a approximate three-minute timeframe, and as --
There are actually no rules when it comes to parents in school committee meetings. I'm sorry, you guys keep saying that and doing that, but if there's concerns, and I have time to come today, I'm going to address them. So, and I'm sorry if I take up anybody else's time. I apologize. But first of all, with these two programs, I just want to say as a parent that I like the second one better, because I think a lot of us feel that the kids are already too involved in devices and phones, and we're actually trying to back them away from that, especially after COVID. So, I know the cost is a little bit more, but I think it's worth it. The other thing I want to say is, I'm Latina, and my family comes from Venezuela and also Sicily, and we've had non-English-speaking parents as of now in school systems across the country, and the best thing you can do for them is really to, like, put a program together to teach them English, so that they can actually participate in the community. So, rather than have everything be in a different language online, it's important for them to actually be able to engage in everything and learn English. So, those are my two things with that. The other thing is, I don't know if people here are aware, but some concerning information came out about a school committee member over the past week, and it's concerning. I don't know if that member wants to speak to it or not, or if they'd like me to speak to it.
This is your opportunity to speak.
Okay. So, I just want to say that when parents send their children to school, first thing and most important thing is safety. thing and most important thing is safety, trusting the people who that work around them, trusting the people who are making decisions for them, like on the school committee. And when we do that, and we send them off for the six, seven hours, or whatever it is that they're doing, we're expecting that, you know, we wouldn't have to worry about anything, that people would be transparent, they would be honest, they would be forthcoming, especially if they're running for positions in the community that have to do with children. So it did come out that Will has a history of having sexual relations with somebody who actually graduated from high school that he taught, so that's considered grooming. And he was asked last year why he no longer taught when he was running for the council, and he was not forthcoming with parents. So I'm very concerned, because I'm sure there's other people in the community who have had issues like this in their family, I honestly don't feel that it's appropriate for Will to be working around children, not when they come in here for different speaks, not when they come in and they help with video cameras, not when there's events with children, I just don't think it's appropriate. For somebody to not be truthful with parents when that question is asked, then to turn around and in different places, and I'm just going to say social media, because it's like the town square, accuse parents of things and lie about it to cover up his own misfortunes, it's inappropriate, and the trust is now gone, because working with domestic violence, working with, you know, sexual predators, working with all those different things, you can say an alcoholic or a drug addict, if you're not truthful about it, you're not rehabbed, and it could happen again. So I'm not comfortable with my children being in school, or my nieces and nephews, and somebody making decisions that could groom a parent's child and then have relations with them, and that's what I'm here to say.
All right, thank you for your comments for that. I will say from a committee perspective, this is not a conversation piece.
It's not a conversation piece, I want to make sure that when my child's anywhere in any of these buildings, and my nieces and nephews are anywhere in any of these buildings, that somebody who is not trustworthy, not honest, and has, I mean, a parent's worst nightmare is exactly that, for that to happen to their child.
So what I will say, just because we sit here on the committee, and this goes for any of us, it doesn't bypass the protocols that are in the school, I'm a parent, so even when I go to the school to either drop off something, or pick up something, or go have a meeting, I have to present a license, I have to wear a visitor badge, I have to be escorted around the school.
Will doesn't have any children in the school, so that's not an issue, he wouldn't be in the school or around the property if he were to step down, and I'm asking for support with that. I'm very uncomfortable having my children and my nieces and nephews in the school system with somebody who has that history and has had, the license is suspended over.
I think there.
It's a huge issue.
And I hear you, right, and from this body, regardless of what our personal opinion, as far as Will stepping down, that's of his own fruition, or the town voting aspect of it, but we as a committee are not going to comment on it, I think there's a lot of different opinions, different perceptions of facts.
So I have to worry about my child on the school properties, or doing something regarding the school, and worry that he's there, my nieces and nephews as well, I have to worry about that.
Again, I've explained the safety protocols relating your children.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about things that we have done in the community for the children all over the different properties, not necessarily in there with a license, et cetera, and he works for the school committee, so he would get let into the school. Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't, because as I just expressed to that, he's allowed in the school, he has a license, he is not.
He doesn't have a child in the schools.
Okay.
So we let people in the school with licenses that don't have children, just anybody, I'm saying, we do that?
We ask them what their, so go back to the policy, we ask them what the purpose is.
So let's get the policy updated, and as a parent, we, the people who really honestly runs all of this, that's what we need to work on, so that's what we'll do. I also have a question, because this came to my attention, and a lot of people are afraid to discuss it, but there is a member on the school committee that has actually stolen from funds from the women's swim team, and there is an on-record court case in Weaham, and they are engaged in managing money still with the school, and they were not forthcoming with the public to give that information. How does this happen? How do you, how do people run for things in positions where they really have no business doing that? It's deceit, it's lying.
Again, that's, you're referencing that case, that case is public information, and it would.
Oh, so people need to go, wait a minute, before I vote, I need to go check everybody's record. No, you should be forthcoming, you should be forthcoming that you stole 10, 15, $20,000, whatever it was, from the girl's swim team, whoever did that on this board. So it concerns me, you have our tax dollars that you're playing with, and money evidently just doesn't mean anything, it's a trust issue, so I just wanted to bring it to the community's attention. Thank you.
Anybody else for public participation?
Good evening, I'm Andrew O'Nugger, I have two sons currently in the high school. I've met with Mrs. Strauss and members of the committee, and I stand before you as a voice of my children, and it saddens me to revisit this conversation time and time again. We've met before, we've brought up the racism situations we've dealt with, I don't want to single anybody out, but again, children of members of the school committee participate in the racist heckling of my children, and that uncomfortable feeling I would present to you, to call you out and put you in the limelight of your peers and members of the committee, is the same uncomfortable feeling my kids have to endure day in and day out in this school. I stand before you with help of resources, friends, family, peers, and demand change, demand policy change, demand that this is not just my problem, this is our problem. These children are the seed of our future, if we do not feed our seed, it will no longer grow. We, as a community, come before you and ask all of you to join us in the movement of growing, change, betterment, of us as a community, us as a whole, us as a school, us as people in general. I could go on and on and let my emotions come before me, but I want you to understand the passionate feeling I have within me for my children is something I cannot explain to anyone, because your children do not walk in these shoes, your children do not come home hanging their head low, every day disappointed, upset, bothered, day in and day out, these are my problems, these are my fears, this is the challenges my family faces, and I demand change, I demand your help as a school committee, as human beings, I demand your help to stand with us in change for these matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Because items have been deleted before, I just want to be sure that that, what I discussed does not get wiped from the video, that's all.
Anybody else for public participation?
Hello, as many of you know, I've stood here before, and I just want to say thank you for that whole diversity presentation, it is a start, but I might have missed it, was it for the high school kids, or was it just K through eight?
The ELA presentation?
Yes.
That's for middle school, so it'd be six, seventh, and eighth.
Okay. So my name is Susan O'Nugger, and as many of you know, my children attend school in this district, and unfortunately have been faced with many challenges throughout the years simply because of the way they look. The fact that I am a white person carries the cost of allowing me. It's because I'm mad, to be honest, it's because I'm mad because I've been dealing with this for five years, five years. Mr. Higgins is well aware, I met with him when he, they were in the eighth grade, every single Thursday. Here we are in high school, so I apologize. Here we go. The fact that I'm a white person carries the cost of allowing me to begin each morning on a normal note. I have automatic access to regular life values and attitudes, just because of the way I It is as simple as brushing your teeth to be pleased to be a white person in this community. Today, we are standing here prepared to battle against racism that my children experience daily in this district. This district needs to learn how to have healthy, productive conversations about racism and race. My family and I have attended numerous meetings with staff administration and even the school committee. Regrettably, my sons still experience the same difficulties. Why? Why hasn't anything changed? Last May, when I stood here in front of many of you, asking these same questions, you all looked at me as if this was the first time you've ever heard of it. Today is a different story. And because this is not, and because this has been brought to your attention previously, let me ask it again, why must my children endure year after year of racism and mistreatment? As many of you are aware, I have been an advocate not only for my sons, but also for those who may not otherwise be able to speak up for themselves. I'm not only here to promote equality, I am here to bring about change. Racism will never be tolerated. Ask yourselves, would there be change if your own children faced what many other children, including mine, have? We will not sit here in silence to make others feel comfortable. We have no fears of speaking the truth, because the truth does have power. We must be prepared to discuss the severity of the issue if we are to achieve racial justice in the schools. In instances, in instances of race, sorry, the instances of race that are occurring in this district must be taken seriously. So let's take a look around at this table, for instance. We can notice the lack of diversity, no wonder there's no, no wonder there's no, no one considers the racism issue in this community to be urgent. Sorry, I erased my speech and then had to rewrite it. Nobody has experienced it or lived it, but we have. We need to see diverse across all schools, not only as teachers, but administration and in this committee. How can people make change if they haven't experienced the need for change? The solution will be change in seeing more diversity in the people in power, the people making policies. Fear has a power that keeps us from doing our purpose, but we are not letting fear rule. We choose to do this by showing up, speaking up, and being the first to stand up to people who refuse to do better. In this, in this district, diversity needs to be a core value. To make a school atmosphere more diverse, diversity skills are crucial because they foster an inclusive educational climate. These skills allow you to become more understanding of and accepting of diverse requirements of all people. Combating racism that contributes to fueling the fire towards forms of hatred and discrimination should not be tolerated, ever, not in schools, not in jobs, not in the community, not in the real world. We must work together to create a community where everyone is accepted and appreciated for their differences. We must teach our children to love and respect all people, regardless of race or beliefs. We must strive for a diverse community. I get that you're, we're working towards it, and I know the superintendent is new, and we have spoke, we met, but it's been a long time, a long time. I got no support last time from here, everybody just kind of looked at me, asked me how to spell my last name, said we would get in touch with me and look into making changes and policies and what have you. Here we are, almost a year later, and we're still having the same conversation. What is it going to take to make change? I ask you guys that. Are you ready to make the change? Are you scared to make the change? Are you afraid to have the conversations? What is going on? Do we need the education? I'm not sure, but as you can see, we have resources, so let's use them. Thank you.
Anybody else for public participation?
Hi, I'm an educator at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech, and I have witnessed, everything is very much like the school committee at my school, but I'm hoping that you're hearing everything that has been said to you and processing it and willing to actually take that step. It's never okay for children to feel bad, as Caucasian, Caucasian, you're all Caucasian, you can't understand, you haven't lived that experience, you don't get a look or a side glare when you go to the store, you can learn about it, but you'll never know what it feels like, and I'm fortunate enough to have grown up in a diverse area, so I've seen what it does to my friends and my family members, and you need to really dig deep within yourselves and not just, you know, just brush it off, because it's real, and I can't tell you, and it's because I'm white, all of the disgusting comments I've heard from other educators and educated people, that they just don't think it's real, or they put it as some vote culture, it's not, it's a real thing, and I mean, there are people that are going through their lives, our children are going through their lives, feeling like they're less than, and they're not, and we need to do better, and we can do better. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what would you name again?
Kelly Haggerty.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing tonight? My name is Trevor Brown, I was a student at this school for four years, I went to Free Town Elementary, the middle schools, 12 years. I'm going to tell you guys this now, I'm happy with the steps that are being taken, it just, it saddens me that I graduated in 2009, and the problems that I faced are still here today in 2023. There's not much, you know, that you can do today, but I mean, it's a start, and the fact that we have to come to a community, a school committee meeting to say stuff like that, like, I don't want to have to see Drew like this, I'd rather be at a cookout hanging out with him, I don't want to have to come voice for his kids, and I have to have conversations with the boys and tell them, like, hey, just get through it, like, I don't want, shouldn't have to come to school and feel like, hey, I kind of got to see which kid's going to say what to me today, like, when I was here, I've had kids flatten my tires, I've had my locker peed in in the gym, like, it was, I've had a lot of things happen to me here that I felt like I could not speak up on. I didn't have teachers or staff that looked like me, my guidance counselor, Mr. Gorman, great guy, if it wasn't for him, honest to God, I probably would have dropped out of school. It's sad, because as you guys can tell, I'm a very educated young man, I'm not going to say that this school does not have a great education system, educationally, it's great, but as far as it, when it comes to dealing with the extracurriculars, I'll say, with other students, it's kind of, it gets in the way. I graduated this school with a 1.67 GPA, I went to college, and I graduated college with a 3.6. The sad part is, is I know I'm not dumb, I know I'm not stupid, it's just all the extra things that went into play with me trying to get my education to better myself, it kind of just, it was almost as if I had just white noise in my head, I'm trying to focus on one thing, and I hear different things in my head, so it's like, you just got to do better, honestly, and if there's anything, I'm from Free Town, like, I've probably done your inspection sticker at some point in time, so, everybody knows me, if there's like any questions or anything, like, I'd love to help as well, like, as a member of the community who is Cape Verdean and black, I would love to help, and the fact that the population has doubled, it's at, what, 78 you had said, which, when I was here, I will tell you, first, it was probably 20 children. So I'm happy, as a black man, that we have that. So I'm happy, as a black man, that we have that many students, but I'm also nervous for those kids, because there are more students for those children who do not like them to pick on. That is all I have to say, and I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you. Anybody else for public participation?
Hi, yes, Christina Bearfoot-Lakeville. So, when I'm, when I'm trying to get the point across to is, somebody who doesn't have children in the school would not get in the school without a license. Somebody sitting on the school committee would, or be invited to things that have to do with my nieces and nephew and my children. So I'm wondering, do I have to go as far as getting restraining orders for all of those children to make sure that he's not in the buildings? I'm just not understanding what people don't understand. This is a huge thing. He groomed a young girl and then had sexual relations with her, and then lied to the entire community, two communities about it. How do I make sure that this person is not near my children and my nieces and nephews? My children have a right to go here. We're not a democracy. In other words, you said, we'll wait and see what happens when we vote. No, this country is not a democracy, we're a republic, and that means my rights, because I'm bothered by what's going on and I'm fearful for my children, need to be addressed. They have, they need to be addressed.
Okay, it's, it's not something that we're going to address here as the school committee body.
So nobody returned my email, any, any, any replies from my emails, so I'm hoping to get some replies tomorrow, and we can start talking about policies and things that we need to do. I'm concerned.
So we did get your email this morning, you know, for that, and you will have a response Anybody else for public participation?
Hi, my name is Eliseb Perry. I'm the deputy director at Mass High at Greater New Bedford Career Center. I recently moved into the community, and it saddens me to hear what's going on right now. Honestly, in this day and age, this should not be happening. It is so important for our kids to feel safe. That's the only way that they're going to learn, if they see, feel safe, and they trust the educators who are teaching the curriculums. As I sit here, my thoughts are, have you reached out to other school districts who may be going through the same situation to see how they're combating that issue? And what resources they've brought in? I know it, I'm a YWCA board member, and as part of the board, there is, Gil Forz has gone out to several communities and talked about, you know, race, racism, and equity and things like that. So is there a possibility of bringing in some speakers to speak to the student body and to kind of do a professional development with the instructors, the teachers? Just some thoughts.
Anybody else for public participation? We've gone to item 10, old business FY23 budget update.
Revenues appear to be tracking on target as compared to the budget at this time. And since the last report, just a few weeks ago, there have been no significant changes. As far as expenditures, our overall spend within available balance after open purchase orders is $4.0 million. It is tracking very closely at this point compared to last year, where we had $3.8 million available. And since this report has been published, I know that I've spoken in previous meetings and also in relation to the FY24 budget, about inflation with oil prices and whatnot. Just yesterday, due to the recent oil orders and the ones that we project to have through the remainder of the year, we did increase purchase orders by $150,000. That's, of course, for all locations, $150,000 combined, which, again, includes the projections for year end.
Any questions on FY23?
Before we turn the V I.
Yeah, no, not yet. Item number 11, FY24, this is a vote required piece. Do you want to sort of give us a quick intro, and then we can?
Absolutely. Included in your packet is an update of the FY24 budget. A summary is provided in the packet since our March 15, 2023, public hearing meeting. The adjustments include a use of E and D of $176,378, an additional use of circuit breaker of $150,000, to bring that total revenue source to $1,308,342. And some changes in a few line items within the central office budget, which all met to zero, are included in your report. The Regional Finance Committee did meet on March 21, 2023, where a budget recommendation was discussed at a total expenditure level ceiling of $45,201,00501, which is a 4.29% increase over last year. An assessment for Freetown at that meeting discussed of $13,155,841, an increase of $143,126, or 1.10%. An assessment for Lakeville of $16,482,96, an increase of $308,125, or 1.91% over last year. And included in your packet on the back of the second page is the vote request for the FY24 budget. And before we get to that, I'll just highlight, also in this report are some updates for the Commonwealth and upcoming dates for the district. Regional Finance Committee meeting April 25, Lakeville Town meeting May 8, Freetown Town meeting June 5. And of course, as always, our final budget, as far as state funding, is subject to change as it goes through the House, the Senate, and conference prior to finalization, which we hope for July timeframe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kara. This final budget and this, the assessment implications for both towns, as Kara said, 1.1% for Freetown, 1.9% for Lakeville, with an overall assessment increase of 1.5%, is the lowest overall budget presented to the school committee since 2017.
So from a regional FinCom perspective, you, on your desk, you have three copies of the assessment, just so that you see a comparison. The original, that was presented by the administration, which is the title of that. The second one, the middle one, is the public hearing piece. And then the last one here, which is dated the March 21, is the one that was presented to the regional FinCom. This is the, this is the budget that was voted by the regional FinCom as a recommendation to the full committee. And just from a full transparency perspective, we presented the offset from E and D for the technology pieces. These were the ones that came out of the operational budget, and would be offset by E and D, not, not those that are offset by the SRPs. The, the towns did bring up a concern that technology may not be one-time funds of that, but I, I think that this is a comfortable piece that we can go in from that. There were also some reduction in, in the staff perspective in this. So this is the ceiling. I will say that there were concerns raised by both towns as far as sustainability, meaning, you know, how do we do this year over year, you know, for that? So it was a, while there was a unanimous support to move this forward, there were still reservations from the towns from an overall sustainability perspective. So just to put that there. So this is a budget, as I said, we will vote on it tonight. This is our ceiling. It can come down, it cannot go up in that case. So this is one that we will, can still have a lot of work to do. There's still some missing pieces that we're not too sure what's going to happen, including from a special ed department, so kindergarten numbers, what have you, and those will continue to be worked on. But this is a, a number that, as I said, is one that we'll be voting on, and I wanted to give all three views, because I think the last one wasn't one that discussed as a full committee here, but we discussed it at the regional FinCom. So I'll pause there to see if there's any questions.
So I've given this a lot of thought. This vote is a really hard one for me. I've always supported the schools and the administration, the teachers. However, I spoke on sustainability last year at this time, when we were doing budgets and contracts and so forth, and my fears have grown even further this year. Never have I seen town officials come out to a school board meeting in unison, almost, and share their concerns on our budget. I have some notes here, so I don't forget anything. We've had both towns talk to us over and over again about the future, and that concerns me greatly. I share their concerns. I watch the meetings on Lakeham and on Freetown YouTube, the finance committee and the, and the board of selectmen meetings, and they are very concerned about next year, and the following year, for that matter. I mean, it, we all know what the economy is looking like right now. It's clear that our select boards and finance committees are warning us of the future of our schools. They're looking at long distance, and I fear we're not looking, as a committee, as close to long distance as we should. I also feel, I've also said as an observer at the recent regional FinCom meeting, and although I agree, Steve, that this was a number that was voted on, I got the very clear indication that this was something that we were going to continue to work on and try to whittle down even further. And we have a little bit of using E and D. I think everyone sitting at this table, and probably everybody in the audience too, is extremely proud of the top quality schools that we have had in Lakeville-Freetown. For two little communities, it's pretty amazing what we have done in education, over, for many decades, for that matter, for a long time. And although I appreciate all the work you've done, Ashley, I'm concerned, I'm really concerned about the projection of the 100 students. I read, read your report, I understood your report, but it's still a projection. I'm mindful that the 100 potential students, which is a projection, is very, very high. We've never seen anything like this. Our enrollment has been going down steadily. They've gone down this year, and they've gone down substantially in the last 10 to 12 years, 10 to 17 years. So that projected number of 100 seems very high to me. And I'm also concerned, because the only support being hired is at the administrative level, being the team leader. I guess my question, as a longtime teacher, it kind of troubles me, because I want to know where it's going to be the support for these 100 students if they do come in. I understand what you had said, that there's, that we're looking at five at every grade level, but I think historically, we have always found our greatest needs are K1 to the elementary level. Do we know how to service this large population?
Can I jump, can I jump in and answer a couple of questions that you've already asked?
Let me, let me check that, two more, then you can have, because it all rolls into one. So do you know, do you know how we're going to service them? Is there a plan to add students to the special education teacher loads that are already, I understand, pretty heavy? Okay, I'll leave you there. There's two, they kind of, they meld together nicely.
Right, so you have already stolen a little bit of what I was going to preface tonight when I started my report, and how I felt very frustrated and defeated leaving the March 15 meeting, being questioned and having concerns surrounding the special education population. I've worked here for seven years, and as far as I am aware, in going through previous school committee reports, working with previous directors, there has been no information provided about enrollment, special ed populations, evaluation numbers, out-of-district numbers, or anticipated growth, in future growth. So I pride myself on the time, the hours spent gathering information from 2015 to the present day, to make sure that you're all aware of the growing population and concern for special education, as well as ELL. I did not just ask for the team chair position, I also asked for the preschool position, because that is really where we are seeing the highest influx of students. If we look at my projections, again, on page seven, as I noted to all of you, school committee members, since February, when I first started sharing this information about anticipated numbers, as well as the information I have shared with town members that have reached out, this is a projection, and there's no way of clearly defining what next year's going to look like. I could be off by 50 students, depending on move-ins, depending on move-outs, depending on who actually is on track to graduate and who's not going to graduate, depending on the district. Just this past week, we have had nine phone calls about students that are moving into district. Nine. Seven of those students are special education students on IEPs. Two of those seven special ed students are residentially placed students that will cost us $350,000 each a year. One week, five days. Jen Seabird, correct? Everything can change at the snap of a finger. I could have 50 kids move out, I could have 20 kids, 25 kids move in. And I can, I can only give you numbers based on what I have gone in past and looked at trends. What I do know right now is our evaluation numbers. If we look on, one second, I'm going to skip to my report just to answer this question, if you don't mind. If we look on page five of my special education report, if we look at our evaluations in process right now, pre-K to three, there are 54 evaluations in process right now. So this goes to the question you had asked, Deb, about where are these projections going to land grade level-wise? I can't tell you exactly. I made a guesstimate that this 100 could be spread out, averaging five students at every grade in every building. However, we know that that's not going to be the likelihood. We know the likelihood, according to data, that the elementary is going to hold the highest population. So we asked for a pre-K teacher to support the growth for pre-K. We brought in, in October, if Gene and Steve, you remember, an additional special education teacher, because we were out of compliance at the start of the year, because my predecessor did not advocate for the needs of the growing population. And yes, the additional services can be absorbed in the current caseloads, because I don't anticipate 25 kids landing in the same grade. So I think that answered your question.
Sheri, the other piece that's important, the other piece that's important, in regard to the position that you're in question of.
There are many, there are many positions. There are many positions, though this is just one right now, but go ahead.
There are not many positions, but that's a separate conversation. In regard to the conversation of the administrative position, the concern in regard to sustainability, it is not feasibly possible for the director of special education to also be the team chair grades nine through 12, and ensure the sustainability of circuit breaker, to ensure the sustainability of all service grids being met, and ensuring that our population are taken care of. So if we talk sustainability, we will be in worse compliance shape if we don't have this position. Because Ashley, no matter how great she is, and she's remarkable, cannot do it. I have spoken to every superintendent in the area, and they all agree, it's not feasibly possible. So the sustainability long-term will hurt us more if we don't take care of this position.
I'm not meaning to get anyone upset. I'm just meaning to look ahead at the future. And I thought that we had a conversation with the towns, that if we had a problem, I'm looking right now to a finance committee and town administrator and a board of selectmen from another town. I thought we had a conversation at one of these meetings, they're kind of a blur right now, that if we had a problem with special education, we could come back to you and explain our problem.
In October?
In October.
Yes.
Is that still on the table for us?
I believe so, yes.
Lakeville?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
What does that mean?
So, so what does that mean, maybe?
What does that mean? That means that both towns are planning on having, I'm sorry, Lea Fabian, Lakeville Selectmen, both towns are planning on having a fall town meeting. So the towns can't spend any money that's not approved by the taxpayer. So we have a fall, both towns are preparing for a fall town meeting, so that means if the schools need more money. need more money, they can actually come to us and ask for it at that time. Otherwise, if there's no fall town meeting, there's no mechanism for the residents to vote in that extra money, in which case, we would have to make sure everything they needed was in this budget. And I think in the last five years, there's one fall that Lakeville did not have a town meeting. But this year, we're definitely planning one. We already know what some of the agenda items are going to be.
What does that have to do with the budget right now, and what needs are? I don't understand how that.
Okay. So from my, so from my perspective, and, you know, I definitely sense the hostility, but as far as reporting is concerned, it's only going to get worse. Okay? We're facing, I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, where we didn't even approve in Lakeville a part-time position for our clerk, because that's how tight things are getting. It's not like we have money that we just don't feel like giving to the schools, that we don't feel like spending. That's, that's far from the truth. We have other concerns, too. Everyone's heard of MBTA communities and all these other things. That could increase housing in both Free Town and Lakeville by 1,000 students. So when we're talking about sustainable budgets, Lakeville currently is seeing a decrease in building permits. So if MBTA communities, and we're actually talking about, about this, because it's going to affect both towns. MBTA communities means that the state wants a minimum of 750 units of housing within the train station in Free Town, and because Lakeville is now considered an adjacent community, there's a few, it's not as strict, but we still are responsible for it. So we're just trying to prep everyone, and what we're asking is to build this relationship. That's why, why has no one ever asked you these specific questions? Probably because we haven't been this concerned in a while.
Well, this is my first year, so I don't know why the questions haven't been asked in previous years.
I'm telling you why I've never, I've been selecting for four years now. I've never felt the need to come here and dive into every dollar of the school budget, because I've never been this concerned before with sustainability. So it has nothing to do with you. It has nothing to do with the superintendent being new. It literally has to do with the fact that we're very concerned about sustainability. And I know everyone's done a great job, you know, sharpening their pencils and non-stop conversations. Kara's working, you know, like crazy behind the scenes and to get us information. And we are still, I'm still concerned with where does the money come to pay for the three teachers that are under grant right now, next year? That's an increase of how much in the budget. We know that's coming. We can't, you know, and like I had said, whatever positions we funded in the town of Lakeville through CARE's money, we, we had a source for it before it became part of our, you know, our regular budget. So I'm not seeing what that source is. So, I mean, what are you going to do? Lay those three positions off next year? It sounds to me like you can't afford to. So we just, we just need to continue working on the relationship. And, you know, we can't be accused of not wanting to help when we're not, we're concerned. Like I said, the town clerk asked for a part-time position, and the Lakeville Select Board said no.
And I don't think I'm accusing you if it came off that way. I'm sorry. I'm just very passionate about.
No, but I do, right. And I do understand, and it has nothing to do with you. It's just, this is why this question hasn't been asked as detailed as it has been this year. It has nothing to do with anybody sitting here. It really has to do with the numbers.
Can I just?
Guys, I do need to bring this back. We have open, we have open meeting law that we have to abide by.
I know. But I can answer her question, though. It's a process.
Yeah, so we can talk about it separately.
Okay, that's fine.
Can I just finish?
Yes.
And Ashley, this is not you. It is not you. As I say, and I hope that the others here would agree with me. Last year, I talked about fiscal responsibility, too, in the fact that we're not sustainable. We have done a really good job, but we're getting to the point where we're going to start having to lose teachers or staff members or whatever in a few years, and we don't kind of hold the brakes back. And I guess that's just, that's the way it is. It's a little like your household. You have to just look ahead to see what's happening. You know, just yesterday, I went to the mailbox, and I found this Massachusetts Association of School Committees flyer. They're having a program. It's called Staring Down the Fiscal Cliff. It's happening in Boston in April, no, I think it's in May, first of May. And I'm just going to read you one line. The very first line says, "Moving toward September 2024, many Massachusetts school districts may be headed into the perfect financial storm." That's what, that's all I'm saying. It isn't that I, projections worry me a little. I think I would rather trust our towns, that if we get into a big problem, and yes, we could, I understand. Somebody could move in next week.
So in terms of special education, though, we have to service these kids. And if the numbers keep rising, that's what I don't understand. I don't understand. The special education students, we have to service them by the DESI law. Why, I don't, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. I'll get up to the podium if I don't mind.
No, I hear your point. Right. Trying to keep it from an open meeting law that we have that. And I said this many times, and Kara, please correct me from wrong here, we're not like other districts. We did not take ESER funds in the magnitude that other districts have done to offset our operating budget. Okay? We held that line, that these were one-time funds, these were not, we do have three teachers that are in the ESER, it's, and I don't want to, they're two paraprofessionals and a teacher, or are they all teachers?
So there are three, three part-time reading interventionists, two and a half hours a day, three times a week. And then there are three math specialists, I'm trying to get the terminology correct. It's the three math specialists, I think, that we'd be looking at as a district, and for which I have mapped out a plan for it to be taken, absorbed over a multi-year period, partly through school choice, and partly through the operating fund, and then phased into the operating fund over time.
Yep.
So I think we can soften the blow with that, in my personal opinion, from a finance point of view. I feel that in those positions in particular, we have looked at how to phase them in.
Yep. So to answer the question about that study in May, I don't think we're in the same boat as a lot of districts. Is it going to be tough? It is. But I don't think that this district is going to have the cliff, because we have a line as far as the, what we use, the state and the federal funds, and quite frankly, the federal funds are not guaranteed, right? And many districts are, and towns are using those. As Kara mentioned to it, and it's been brought up, and this was discussed with other finance people that have one-on-one conversations. We have looked at those, and how do we not go into shutting off those positions, and how do we maintain them going forward? And the strategy of our school choice funds over a multi-year period allows us to continue that process, right? That's the process. So it's not that, all right, well, instantly next year, three new teachers are in the operating budget and has to be funded by the towns, right? That's not the approach that we were going through in that particular case. But you, I'll let you.
I just want to finish, because I think that there's a misunderstanding here in the audience, and probably up here, too. All I'm asking, I am going to vote no on this. I can't vote yes, because I'm afraid a yes vote might keep us at a ceiling. I want us to continue to, and Leah just said it, sharpen our pencils, just keep watching the numbers, just keep giving us for the next month until town meeting, so that we can see it, we can whittle this down even further. That's, that's my point. I don't want to vote tonight personally, because it's my vote. I don't want to vote tonight and have everybody say, okay, we're all set.
And that's your prerogative to vote like that, right?
Exactly. And I just wanted.
But that's not been the process.
I wanted to just explain why my no vote is. I'm not voting against special education by any means. I'm a teacher. So I've had special education. I know the laws. In fact, I've got a master's degree in special education, so I know the laws, or I didn't know them, might not know them as well anymore. That's not my point. My point is that I hear the towns at every single meeting I listen to, and there's probably been eight of them so far between, maybe more, between the two towns, and they're talking about it every single meeting, and it scares me. That's it.
And just to clarify, voting on it tonight doesn't stop the process.
I know.
And it hasn't.
And that's my no vote. That's it.
So let me complete the thought here. That's been the same process even the last number of years. We have reduced the budget all the way up to town meeting. We have also increased what we needed in the budget, where the classroom size numbers were increased number-wise. That, that's, that's fine. We want the teacher, but it's got to come out of the existing budget. So we don't go back to the town.
I understand that. I understand that. And maybe it's for the, for the audience, too. I understand this is not the end.
I apologize. We need to keep this, this is not, this is not a public meeting. So this is really need to, from a standpoint of a budget discussion. So.
So you're not going to allow me to speak?
Yes. Deb should speak. She has a question, and it's important that she understands.
No, I just have, I have a quick statement that I, I think, first, I want to say thank you to everybody who's worked diligently on this budget and maneuvering numbers. Kara, Ashley, they have answered a million questions for me. So I do want to thank them, because I have asked every little intricate question you can imagine, so that I do have a better understanding. The town, I mean, we support the education. I've said that in the past. If you need it, we will do our best to provide it. But we are facing sustainability issues. I think my one question is, as Ms. Belay said, her, her projections could be off by 50. I mean, and I think that's the alarming thing when we saw that number. It's the biggest number we've seen, and it could, it could be, it could be real, based on her projections. So I think my only question is, if you vote this budget and you keep these added positions, which I don't, I mean, I'd rather see support to the teachers than the administration, but that's your, your decision. If you do get these positions, are you prepared to lay them off next year if the numbers are not at 100 special education students?
Correct me if I'm wrong, and this was discussed at the last regional FinCon, like for that preschool teacher aspect of it, if the need is not there, we wouldn't go forward with the hire, right? So that's, so this.
Right. But you're not going to reduce the budget, then. You're not going to reduce the assessment to the towns.
Again, the budget that's voted on tonight is not the final budget, right? So if we come in and we come up the town meeting, and that is not a need, we would re-rote that budget in that particular case.
So you reduce the assessment to the towns, and if that, if you don't hire, if you don't need, if you don't need the teachers and the administration?
That's not just for that position, it's anything, right? So, but let's just say that we put in the 24th bus, and then we find out that it's not needed, right? We would change the budget, and we would lower the budget number that would be voted on in town meeting floor, right? So that, that, that's the continuation of the process.
What are you going to know about these projections? Are you not going to have that number to?
We're not going to know the solid number until August, when we're ready to start a school year.
Right.
But I do want to just clarify and say that this projection, whether it's 101 or 50, is not affecting what we're asking for in the budget, because this projection is not going to change the need for an administrator, which is extra help in the elementary schools, as well as alleviating a team chair off of my plate, so that we can all do our jobs the way we should be doing them, and the pre-K, which is very obviously supported through the growth, and doubling in enrollment in the last four years, going from 20 to 40, since 2015, excuse me, to 2023, our present time. So it's not like we're looking at adding teachers and psychologists to support the evaluations and the growth district-wide. We're looking at adding a teacher at the preschool level, because there is, as of right now, numbers showing that there's a need for an additional two sections, which is one teacher. And then again, allowing me, as a director of student services, to do my job and oversee the district, without also having to oversee upon-equit specifically and out-of-district, and residency, and civil rights, and McKinney-Vento. I can't, I can't do that effectively. So the number, the 100 students, whether, like I said, it's 50 or 100, isn't going to change what those two positions that we're asking for.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you for letting me speak.
I would only add, in light of the real sustainability concern, I think it's a budget that reflects our priorities in terms of supporting our most vulnerable students, in addition to the positions like math interventionist, reading support, special ed support, as we come out of COVID, close the achievement gap, and, you know, move this district forward a little bit further. But beyond that, I mean, I think, Ellen, you made a good point, that this is the lowest assessment to the town since 2017. So I think we should be proud and celebrate that fact, you know, through you, your transition here, but also Kara, supporting and finding a budget that drove that number down pretty deeply. So I thank you for that. But I think it's a reflection of our priorities in terms of supporting our most vulnerable students, and all students, for that matter, in some of these positions, that'll help close those gaps that were created by COVID.
I think, too, and I get it. I don't personalize anything, Leah. So that, that's not a concern. And I understand the town perspective. My job is to balance both, from a superintendent perspective, which is, how do we improve the educational experience of all of our students, and how do we remain fiscally stringent? I completely understand that. What I think we are also, and I don't know if you were at the meeting, but I am very proud of the fact that, at the high school, for example, where we are desperately short of courses, where we are desperately short of experiences for, for our kids, that Kalen and her team, along with Terry, along with a number of other people, were able to add new courses at no cost. We didn't add teachers. And I was at districts in which you add new courses, it means new teachers. Steve knows that. We've gone through that. And so we have revamped a student handbook with finances in mind. And, and we have to prepare, we're spending all of our time, as we should right now, on special education, but we have a whole population we have to educate. And we have to make sure that they are prepared for the workforce, they are prepared for the military, they are prepared for two-year colleges, four-year colleges, and what worked five years ago to get our kids into, just by SATs, are all gone. And so I give Kalen credit and the high school team credit for saying, okay, we don't have any money. We're not going to ask for all of these teachers, but we are going to improve programming. And, and I just want to be on record saying, that is a complex set of scenarios for, for us to weave through. So I get that a lot of money goes to the schools, and I get that the conversation is on special education. But we also need to understand that we haven't just asked to spend, we've cut in a lot of areas and still added programs. I just, that's important for everybody to understand.
Any other questions or comments in the committee? I'll just go there. I think, Leah, you had asked on the meetings, we need to do a level services budget.
No, I didn't say that. I said the towns are doing this.
No. But my point is, I don't think this is a level services budget. I think there are a lot more needs in this district that we're not meeting, right? That if we did a level services budget, it would be much higher, right? So I think we're already going lower. And as I said, this is just the first step. Just similarly, we've done with other that. We already have a next scheduled regional FinCon for that, and we'll continue the process and continue the communication with the, with the different members. Tom?
Steve, I absolutely respect your open meeting law, and I'm probably going to hate myself for saying what I'm going to say right now, but Lakeville had the opportunity to allow for a warehouse, and the residents turned it down, okay? Resident, the warehouse would have brought new growth in, would have brought a half million dollars in taxation. And I think if parents really want us to be able to fund their schools, they have to understand that when these questions come up, that's how we get extra funding. So it's not the appropriate venue. I apologize. I will probably hate myself for saying it in the morning, but, you know, parents have to realize that we are on what I call the gold standard here. It's not the federal government spending money. We have to have every dollar that we say we're going to give to the schools. And when we're out, we're out.
Kara did prepare a level service budget for me. It would go down. The assessment would go down.
Yep. If we presented a level services budget, your assessment would go up.
Well, the one that she got, Kara prepared one for her that shows a reduced.
I haven't seen what she prepared for you, but I think over the years, we have never presented a full level. I, I haven't seen what she prepared for you, but I, I think over the years, we have never presented a full level services budget. And we've made some, and this is across the board. It's not just education. I think it's facilities. I think it's everything. Right? So I, I can't, I can't comment on what she presented. I haven't seen it. Still for that.
I just want, I'm just hoping for more honesty about level service budget. You will decrease the assessment to the towns. That's all.
Okay. I, I'd love to see that and what we're defining as level services, right, for that. So, yeah. But I, as I said, we've, we've been doing, you know what I mean? I don't think we've ever presented a level services budget that including meeting the needs of all 2,700 of our students the way it should be. Right?
I think that, yeah.
So I think we're, let's, let's level say as far as what the definition of level services. If we say, right, you know, and as, as Ms. Boullet mentioned, we sat here before the start of the school year, we weren't compliant. We don't have a choice in some of those different pieces. And so we had to add resources so that way we're meeting the requirement of being, you know, for our students that have needs in that particular case. So.
Yeah, I'm not saying that level service is exactly what we would want. I'm just saying, I, I'm going to, if, if it wasn't truly a level service budget, it would go down. The assessment would go down. That's all.
I would love to see that and, and, you know, we can go through that. But I, I'd like to understand what we're defining as level services.
So I did present it today to the superintendent and we released it today to Freetown. And what we defined as level service is sort of comparing to any new position request that we had and then adding the bus back in, right? So taking, I hate to say taking out, but reduce to see where we were last year. So it would, it would eliminate in this case, the new position requests. And that's what we presented. So yes, it may be the wording of it, but I do think that's what Freetown wanted essentially.
Funding where we were last year. You're assuming that last year was a level services budget, right? So, okay.
Yeah. Might be verbiage here.
Again, that's assuming last year was at a level services budget. Right? If, if we're doing is we're taking last year's budget, denying any new request, the assumption is last year's was a level service budget.
True. Confused by that. But it, it just says if you didn't add any positions, basically. And you took your budget, you included your increases for your projects and your increases for your utilities, but you just didn't add positions. So level service, meaning you kept the staff. And that budget would be less than what is presented, you know.
It, it would be less by the administrative position.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, okay.
That's correct.
And, and small things, AP exams.
Yeah. So it would have a $320,000 impact overall.
Okay.
Taking into those.
So that's what you're defining as level service. It's $320,000 less.
That's how I would guide it, yes.
Okay.
Can I request that Kara send that to all of us?
Sure. I think that makes sense. If we're, anything we share with the town, we should share with this, with this body before it gets sent out, actually. So. Any other questions? So obviously we need to bring this, a motion to vote on the budget. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
With the caveat that we reinforce the fact that this is a ceiling number. There is no going up. There is only going down.
We, we continue the process as we go through that. Any discussion? This is a budget vote. It does require a two-thirds pass, to pass. And it is a roll call vote.
Steve Oden?
Yes.
Sherry Barron?
No.
Jen Long is not here. Bob Clark?
Yes.
John Burke?
Yes.
Will Stankowitz?
Yes.
Steve Sylvan?
Yes.
I see six yeses and two no's. Even though she's not here, it still counts as a no.
Oh, okay.
It's based upon the number of seats.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah. And if I map correctly, that does pass.
Yes.
Okay? Again, that is a ceiling. Basically, there's no more budget increases. There's only the decreases as we work through this. Okay? Item number 12, the director report.
Yes. So included in your report, several items. The first is, I believe, the governor's supplemental budget. And it's highlighting a supplemental bill signed by the governor directed to extend the universal meals pilot program through the end of the 2023, 2024 school year. And also a consideration to extend the program into the future. So there will be more information to come as, as this progresses. And for health insurance, the next section in the report, the superintendent and I have been working on exploring additional options. And we did hold an informational session for union leaders, which was organized by our health insurance advisor. The union leaders are in the process of engaging in questions and answers to gain information about which options they have. And we've done this to ensure a collaborative process before a decision is made on the health insurance. And just an update on the MSBA SWAMCIT project. We are still having ongoing bi-weekly meetings with the construction team. The design and general contractor team are meeting with administration to discuss color selection for windows, doors, and the frames tomorrow, as well as finalizing the plan for April vacation window removal test. This test will ensure an efficient process prior to the start date of construction. A potential change order is still in the review stage by our OPM with cost impact to be determined. Town officials have been part of this communication process. The target date for construction is still during the summer. However, our OPM has reiterated the design and information for release for fabrication must be completed by the end of this week to maintain that schedule. And the next section on the report, the Maya Wellness Grant. A grant was recently approved for $10,000 from our current insurance provider, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency, so that the district can host for the very first time an employee appreciation day. This will be coordinated by Ms. Fleming, I believe. This is the third year in a row the district has benefited from a grant from Maya. The first year were, was for AEDs. The second year was to support substitute nurses during COVID and this year for an employee appreciation day. The grant's purpose in general is to support the health and wellness of all of our employees. And the last section of my report, the campus master planning. The district did receive seven proposals for what's referred to as a house-doctor contract. The initial review team narrowed the recommendation to four proposals to be further evaluated by the capital committee. The district would have the option of securing a contract to either perform a targeted feasibility and/or design work on specific projects or a more comprehensive project such as a campus-wide feasibility to focus on existing deficiencies in buildings and/or a master plan, which would also take into account future enrollment and evaluation of our buildings. And I have provided recommendations for next steps to Superintendent Strauss. Would that?
First up, I know there was concern about town involvement in the whole master planning perspective. Have we reached out to the, the town administrator and who should be best part of that discussion?
No, I will tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. The, on the health insurance, when, when do we expect it, going back to the budget? When do we expect the, the final numbers associated with that?
So we have computed the numbers under both scenarios. It's just a matter of a, a decision being made at this point. I would say by the end of April for sure. Hopefully in a few weeks, there should be a decision made, I would imagine.
Part of the concern is making sure that our bargaining units are in support of it because otherwise we would have to go back and negotiate with them because our language is very specific in the contract. And it says, if we were to make what they consider to be a significant change, we must come back to the table. That worries me in terms of opening up everything.
Okay.
So, you know, Kara has done a remarkable job and, and so now we're starting to take the lead in terms of, we, we talk about sustainability. We have to make sure that, for example, what is the buyout? If we decide we don't want to stay there. With Maya, it's not a buyout. We have to see with Map Strategic Health, what is the buyout and what's the cost? I mean, there are a number of pieces rather than just bottom dollar that we have to be comfortable with.
Okay. Is this something that we can have by the regional FinCom meeting?
That's my hope, but 25th.
I think it really depends on how the questions and answers move with the union. We are pushing the health insurance analysts, if you will, to get those answers back. But there might be another round of questions. I'm not quite sure how that will go. But I've been sending batches over every few days so far.
And we, we are speaking, Kara and I are both speaking with Maya as well and saying, is there anything else you can do? Is this your best number?
Yes.
Obviously Kara's last school committee meeting with us. So just wanted to thank you for your service to the district and, and wish you all the best in your, your next endeavors. So I know Bob's running.
I was going to give these to my wife, but.
Wait, did you pick out that card yet?
Thank you for all the hard work you did for the district. Probably the best that I've ever been experienced with, and that's, that's a long time. So I speak in front of the committee. You did a great job. We appreciate all the hard work here and at home, I know. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for? Get them in now. Grab a hold, please. All right, Ms. Boullet.
Okay. So I wanted to clarify before I jump into my report details. I want to clarify something from the last meeting as well that I think got intertwined with special education. And that was school choice. I know that was asked about as well. So our school choice numbers for the district is a total of 61 students, four of which are special education. So I, I think that it was misunderstood in one of the meetings that we were servicing a high number of special education services through school choice, which is not the case. I just wanted to note too, of those four, the students are inclusion students and they require or do not add any additional cost to the district. So I just wanted to clarify that because I think that was misconstrued at the last meeting. And I wanted to talk a little bit more about the predictions for where these anticipated projections will fall. I know I just highlighted it briefly when Sherry asked her question about the projections in enrollment. But if we look over on page five of my report, again, I've taken evaluations in process. Right now, our pre-K to three has 54 current evaluations in process. Our four to five and nine through 12 have 20, and our six through eight, which is our middle school, have 16. So the reason I broke it down that way, which seems out of order, is that's how our psychologists are assigned. So I'd wanted you to see how many evaluations these psychologists was responsible for. So there's a quick glimpse at where our highest need is, which is the pre-K to three. Again, as I noted, pre-K enrollment alone has jumped from 20 in 2015 to 40. And if I've looked at our snapshots, so I know every month I've done a school spotlight. And in looking at that, from data collected from 2017, 2018 to present, depending on the school that I spotlighted, our numbers have grown at AES from 57 in 2019 to 77, which is our current. In FES from 2018, we've gone from 83 to currently 103. And then at the middle school, since 2020, we have jumped from 119 to 142. So that is just, that, that, those numbers, Steve, aren't in your report. I see you looking for it. What I did is I took my staff's, my school spotlights from all of my school committee reports and I've captured my previous enrollment data to what our current data is. So if you look at these numbers, which is based on SIMS reporting, so that's not my personal, you know, tracking, you can see that our biggest concern is pre-K to three and six through eight in terms of enrollment. And that is where those students, those nine students coming in minus the two residentially placed, are elementary and FLMS. So you can see even move-ins, that seems to be the trend in which people are moving in and kids are being placed. So if we go back to page one, last but certainly not least, I think I mixed up a Ponequit and Freetown Elementary at one point or another. But today's spotlight is on FES. FES is, you know, the school that houses our preschool. It also houses our South Coast Educational Collaborative, which we contract through. They are housed in that building as well. And then it also houses our pre-K plus program. So both the South Coast program and pre-K plus are separate from the district, but still incorporated in our, in our school building. So here I've given you a little bit of a snapshot of numbers. And again, this is taken from the Department of Ed's SIMS reporting data. So this is not my own projections or my own just data collection over the years. From 2018 to the present time, March 2023, you can see we've jumped, jumped from a total of 83 students to 103. And the percentage seems very high because that's including the preschool population in that percentage. The anticipated number, I did have it increase because of the increase in pre-K that we are seeing. But again, as I said earlier with my numbers, this is all projections. And with homeschool, with move-outs, with move-ins, it could be a wash. But I feel like it's my job to communicate to all of you the absolute worst-case situation and scenario. So within FES, we've got seven special education teachers. We still have a vacancy for our substantially separate pre-K and K program. We were, still are not able to fill that since September. We have two substantially separate programs, which is our pre-K and K and then our one to three. We have a wide variety of service providers that include our behavioral specialist, who's district-wide, occupational therapy, who covers multiple buildings, our PT and APE teacher, who is district-wide, our speech and language pathologist, who we have two of, and then one adjustment counselor. We do have 10 special education paraprofessionals, and that is including one-to-ones or one-to-twos. So that is including all special education paraprofessionals. And then at FES, we have eight grade-level paraprofessionals. We have one psychologist who covers both elementary schools, AES and FES. And then we have a pre-K to three special ed administrator slash team chair. And she is responsible for all of the early intervention, home visits, preschool coordination, as well as the other daily duties of a special education administrator for K through three in both FES and AES. And then we also have our integrated preschool program, which we currently have two teachers, which is four sections. So the three-year-olds come in the morning and the four-year-olds come in the afternoon. I'm going to skip over to page four. I'm not going to go through everything in my report since you had time to preview. And I'll open it up to questions, obviously. I want to talk a little bit about our out-of-district numbers. In, in presenting earlier in the spring and working with Kara, we had presented to the school committee that we would need to increase our out-of-district number to 37. And I just wanted to say at this current time, we have 34 students placed out of district, which is an increase of two because we did have two recent preschool students that have come to us through early intervention that required immediate outplacement because of their significant needs. And we have one potential student that will be placed beginning July 1st because of his significant needs. And then the two other potential students that are inquiring about moving into the district that are the residentially placed that I mentioned earlier when I spoke. So we are looking at, already almost filling that 37 before we're even going into the new school year. The next piece I wanted to cover is moving backwards, page three. Sorry about that. I'm trying to do things by priority. I did capture eighth grade transfers over the years. So again, this is based on my own collection of data over the years as being the special ed administrator for the middle school, high school. So this is the total number of students that have withdrawn at the end of eighth grade to pursue other high school choices or who have moved out. And this is only eighth grade because I wanted to focus today as recently our OC and BP acceptances have come out. And as of right now, 15 of our special education kids in eighth grade have been accepted. We have nine that have been accepted to OC and six that have been accepted to BP. So that's exciting. Page six. No, not page six. Give me a second. Hold on. Page eight, enrollment data. So the reason that I went through and collected this information was. reason that I went through and collected this information was so that I could show that there is a need for an additional team chair moving forward. And what I did is I highlighted the two other districts in the local area that seem to be comparable to us in regards to enrollment, and I have put in what their support staff looks like. And you can see here that there are specific roles for team chairs, out-of-district coordinators, pre-K and early childhood coordinators, and then you have Freetown-Lakeville, which again, not trying to beat a dead horse here, where the director is doing multiple jobs, which makes, again, the efficiency of the director's position very difficult to maintain. And then I'm going to wrap up so that Terri can have her chance to share. I still have some attention.
On this, what is the D reference?
The D?
During October.
What page?
It's on the enrollment.
Page eight. So have a look at Dayton-Rohoboth, 2017-18. It says 2,900. Then just below that, it says D.
I think it was students with disabilities.
Okay.
And I didn't carry it over. I only did the comparison between 17 and 22.
Okay.
And then the number in parentheses under the district is the number of buildings in a district. So I apologize, I didn't specify what that all meant. So I'm going to wrap up on page nine, just a couple of announcements. Our preschool letters have gone out. There have been lots of calls regarding the waitlist and acceptances because we are not accepting four-year-olds next year because of the size of our program and only having the two teachers. So we are only accepting three-year-olds at this time. In addition to that, we've also sent out our summer letters. We've sent out 109 summer letters to our special education students who are eligible for services during the summer months. This year, our program will run from July 10th to August 10th, and the majority of the services will be provided at Gray's, with also some programming happening at FES as well as the high school here. The DESI visit, as Alan touched upon, took place March 23rd, and then wrapped up on the 24th with some interviews of teachers, administration, the CPAC leaders, and then all of us as administration. The concerns that came out of that exit interview that they will be following up with, one of which was the CPAC. They were very concerned with the lack of collaboration in past years with the CPAC, and not really having a voice at meetings and at the table of school committee. So I proudly shared the growth that we've made this year with CPAC. Alan and I have attended every CPAC meeting. We have worked very closely with the two co-chairs to make sure that their voices are heard, that we're trying to get active participation. Just trying to see if someone's still here that I can tap into as a resource. And then also that we've been working to try to bring in outside resources to educate our families and community members. With that being said, we did have a presentation scheduled for last night. However, we did have to cancel. I'm sure you all got the message, because the presenter was ill and was not able to attend. But it looks like we are going to be good to go to reschedule for March 9th. She actually just texted me while we were in this meeting. May, May 9th, sorry. So there will be more to come on that in an update that will come out. Discipline and suspension rates also came up as an area of concern. They looked at all of our district-wide data. They didn't really get in too much, other than the focus on out-of-school suspensions versus more positive, engaging approaches to consequences within the building. So we'll be following up with principals about that and how we can improve those higher numbers. And then, as Alan spoke about, one of the biggest concerns that they shared was our district enrollment increases with ELL, African-American, and Hispanic Latinos, and wanting to know what we were doing to support the increase and how we're educating our staff on diversity and bringing in more diverse personnel to be role models to these students. So their report takes about 60 days to be released. I'm hoping that I will get a draft before hand, so we'll at least know what to expect. But those were the preliminary findings that they, they shared with us at our exit interview. And then last but again, certainly not least, sort of like FES, Unified Track started a couple weeks ago. They had their first meet yesterday at Fairhaven at Cushman Park, and it was a big success. Their first home game is going to be, home meet, excuse me, April 25th versus Somerset-Berkley here at the track. So I'm hoping that we'll do some advertising about that, and I'm hoping that some of you will be able to be present.
Any questions for Ms. Boulay?
I can add one piece. I'm sorry, Steve. It's important to understand, you look at the numbers at FES, for example, 24% of the students at FES are special, I call them special ability students rather than special needs students, but that is a significantly higher number than the state. And what I continue to hear in talking with parents who are moving in is, we have an exceptional program, so we're coming here. That's good, and then it hurts us in terms of numbers. So it's a balancing act. And the state average is around 15 and 1/2%. So if you look at our district total of 17 and 1/2% excluding OOD, we're a little bit above the state, and it's continuing to grow. It wasn't there a few years ago. I will say, one of the positives is that our, and I think Ashley and her vision in terms of creating programs, is going to help bring down some of the numbers for out-of-district. Some of that's programming. So if we can develop programs and keep them in-house, our numbers were real big. The problem, of course, becomes two students who moved in, you know, and I don't mean that as a negative. I'm just saying that's the reality. We can't service those students, and we have two students at 300,000 apiece. So special education is juggling balls. Steve, I'm sorry I interrupted.
No, it's a good point, move-in, move-out. And you highlighted the eighth-grade move-out, and it just made me think of, I assume there's a number of students that are also decertified because the interventions and the services are working. And that would impact the numbers, too, by reducing them. Is there, I mean, is there any estimate or general sense on how many kids are decertified as they?
That are no longer found eligible?
Correct.
I mean, I could go through and provide that data at the next meeting if you would like. Again, that's something we can't predict, though, right? I mean, it's something that we're living in in the moment of, this is a student that has an IEP, and we're going to reevaluate them. And if they're doing okay in school, and we all agree that it's not a result of their services, and that they're doing it because they have the ability and they're able to do it without the help, then we can find them not eligible and hope that they're successful without those services.
Correct. So you don't have to do that. I think my point is the quality, the better quality the services are, the more likely is they'll progress and be decertified.
I mean, that's always the goal. Right. That is always the goal.
Can I get a copy of that report? Will those be versioned?
Yeah. Some of them I wrote in, but yeah. I do have a copy, Deb, of the, of my school spotlights over the year that I've done, and it has the older numbers from like 2017, 2018, 2019, and the current, if you want to take this copy.
I'll take that as well. When I was looking for the numbers, the breakdown, as I had asked for, where do you project the special needs, the additional special needs, sort of, at Gray? It sounds like you provided that.
I spoke about it, but I really said that there's no way of projecting that. I can, I can look at evaluations, like I said, and the evaluation numbers are, yeah, Renee, it's not in there. I, I mean, you can look again at page, page five goes to evaluations. And then what I did is I used that packet that you have in your hand to look at the increases from the historical data to present time. And I see that the pre-K to three and the FLMS numbers are the areas where the needs are the highest. But you can, we can always follow up and have a conversation if you have more questions after reviewing that.
Ms. Barrett?
Easy question for you. I was looking through some of my notes from way back. Did we fill that third grade paraposition?
All the parapositions have been filled, yes. It's the only, the sub-separate pre-K.
The one in Freetown Elementary, right?
What is it?
That was the one at Freetown Elementary? Is that what that was?
To be honest, there's been so much paraturnover this year that I don't know which one you referred to.
Thank you.
The two move-ins, John, those are not funded, correct?
No. Nor were they planned for. But that's what I think my point was, right, is that at any moment, someone could call and say, we're moving in, and now you're fiscally responsible.
So we're already adding to the initial town request for fall meeting for a tune of almost $700,000, then?
Potentially, potentially, yes. Yes. It really depends on.
So they are definite, or they were inquiring about moving in?
One is definite, and the other one is under DCF care. So we're trying to
Share.
Work with, yeah.
Trying to share.
The public school that he's currently taking.
But they're definitely moving into.
They already live here. One of them already lives here.
But we would not be responsible for them until after July 1st.
Correct.
So their current district will be paying from now until July 1st. We then pick it up July 1st.
Correct. But it is an FY25 budget.
But those two numbers are not within the budget number.
That's correct. Correct, because we just found out about them this week.
You had mentioned that we're only doing three-year-olds, to use your terminology, kiddos, right? We're not taking any four-year-olds. What implications does that have the following year?
That means that we would be able to bring in three-year-olds again because our current three-year-old would move up to the four-year-old room.
Okay. But we would still be able to service the three-year-olds or four-year-olds based upon our current setup?
Yes. So our current four-year-olds, our current three-year-olds would move into the four-year-old room.
Yep.
And our new three-year-olds would come in.
Yep.
And then our four-year-olds would go to kindergarten, and our three-year-olds would move up. So it looks like we're going to be in a holding pattern, though, that we won't be accepting four-year-olds, new four-year-olds. There will be a waiting list.
New four-year-olds.
New, yes.
As far as your enrollment data and stopping, I always want to be careful about comparison. I do see a difference in Dayton-Rohoboth, but Dayton-Rohoboth just did a bunch of cuts in their budgets to traditional ed programming, right? So it's a, it's a fine balance. We'll need to look into that aspect of it. And as far as the passion from a special ed perspective, I don't think anybody has any question about that. And to your point, anything that's compliant-based, it's a non-starter. It's a no question. I think what we're looking at is, what can we do to try and prevent students taking into it? And I think that's what some of these positions are that's being requested for. So, and again, we'd have to continue to look at it and see what we can do to move forward with it.
Done.
You got a question?
Oh, my question was on the moving, but I will ask. Is there an update, or do you have any thoughts on the vacancy that's at FES? Is there any, any updates on it? Is there?
We have been interviewing on an ongoing basis, and we cannot find someone that is suitable for the position. We did have a long-term sub, but her time expired with us already. So that, again, leads to a compliance issue, of course, because we have students that would typically be separated by numbers for the regulations in one classroom. But our hands are tied right now.
Thank you.
All right.
Bring it home, Terri.
Fortunately, most of my report is updates, so I will, if you had glanced at it ahead of time, you're going to see some really good things. We did not get approved for the High Quality Instructional Materials Grant. That included ongoing use of our consultant for our elementary implementation. I'm not 100% surprised because there were so many applicants, and that was the reason. Due to the number of applicants in your prior funding, we were not approved for that. We were approved for the Early Literacy Universal Screening Grant, which provides for the funds for the early bird dyslexia. That training is starting at the end of the month for our team that you heard earlier in the year. We were approved to move forward with the ST math to the second round, and I should be hearing soon on that, actually, next week, we should be hearing on that piece. But they did ask us to sign up for the champion event, and so that leads me to believe we're looking favorable in that area. And we were also approved, as you heard earlier, for high literacy, the implementation of the literacy for the ELA middle school curriculum. Running records, fluency progress, that team has been meeting. They are listed there. We have started our work with Dr. Nikki Newton, who is a wonderful mathematician, and that will continue through the end of the year as we build out how to implement it in our classrooms. The district school report cards were posted. Mr. Strauss and I, Alan and I, worked through that with each of the buildings and talked about it. There were areas that stood out to us that we will be presenting on next meeting, but led in the area of teacher licenses, access to broad and challenging coursework, and absenteeism were probably the high, high flyers on those, if you have already looked at them. I attended a meeting on accountability targets where the state defined what their methods for determining those targets for next year will be, and they are back to business as usual. I think the state is just coming back, so they're going back to the same formulas that they used in 2000, prior to the 2019, 2020 school year. We had to file our progress report for the Student Opportunity Act, not to be continually used with Chapter 7 refunds, student opportunity funds. It is a report that came into play in 2019, 2020. We actually filed ours in June of 2020 with our key levers focusing on reviewing and purchasing English language curriculum. And what that act required was to support every student succeeds. They wanted to make sure that student, that districts were focusing three-year gap closing plans on students that fall into the, the sub-separate categories and economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities, or EL students. And so we chose to start with our EL students in the plan. We revised that plan, amended it in 2021, and then this was a year for us to give a progress report on it, and we'll be hearing back from the state in, hopefully, June to August of this year. And starting our new plan, where we will sit with Ashley, Alan, and myself, and stakeholders, and from the results of our prowess monitoring, as well as our accountability data and assessments within the district as to which group we will then focus on for the next three years. And the state really is looking for those, like narrowing in our focus so that we're really building a solid gap, gap building for that small group. So implementing our new EL program and the Wonders program with the EL support, we're hoping that in the next three years, we see the, the benefit of that with our EL students assessment-wise. Mouthful, there's a lot on there. And then we did get our report back, and I will say that I think 60 days was a little bit short. We did get our tiered focus monitoring report back on our EL program, and there were three areas of improvement that the state provided to us. One is on the program and placement. Because we only had one teacher for multiple little buildings, the state found that the district needs to provide more regular intervals of time for the English language teachers with our collaborative teachers so that they can have some planning time together. And I immediately started working with, and Jack left, but I immediately started working with the principals as to how we could arrange the schedules to allow for some time with our EL teachers who are jumping from building to building, and the teachers in, that service our English learners in their classrooms. So that was the first thing that they required. They're in the declining entry to a program. This is the only thing that was procedural. In order for families to opt out, there is a opt-out form that they're supposed to sign every year. That has not been done in the district. And so we have three opt-out families, and this says two, but I double-checked our numbers. We have three opt-out families. We had two of them signed, but one had not come back, so we are working on getting that one. So that's an awareness thing, and we'll make sure to not have that happen again. And then the last thing was licensure requirements. We had staff, according to the report that the state pulled, that did not have their sheltered English immersion, immersion endorsement. However, when the principals and I started to look, there is some disparity between three different ways that you can pull what staff have as far as their licensure. And there is a piece of our report that seems to have not been reported to the state that they pulled from. So we pulled, we went into their ELAR accounts, and we pulled just from public searches, and we found all of ours were, were in compliance. It just was whether they had done the final step, which is an extra step in the ELAR licensure that says, hey, here's my certificate. And so we've had many staff go ahead and follow up and get that done. So that is one of the pieces that I was most concerned about. But as soon as we started working through it, we really are in compliance. It just was a matter of getting paperwork uploaded to the state on our staff's side. So those are the three things. I'll be working with Andrew, our DESI representative, to work on our, what's called a continuous improvement and monitoring plan, and that will be submitted by May 3rd. improvement and monitoring plan, and that will be submitted by May 3rd.
Any questions for Teri?
Thank you.
Unless there are any objections, we'll gloss over the subcommittee updates, unless there's something glaring for any of those. The only one I would say is the regional FinCon meeting is the 25th.
But it now can be virtual. So right now, it's, when we met, we weren't sure about the moratorium.
Yep.
So we had planned for it in the library. It can be virtual.
It can be virtual, yep.
That's really your choice.
Under the, other business coming before the committee, on the each member's table, there are two items. One is Superintendent Strauss was asked to be part of the Superintendent's Advisory Council, the College Board Superintendent's Advisory Council. My personal opinion, I think it's a great thing for the district recognition, what have you. My only, and this wouldn't constitute a requirement of a vote of this committee, it's just more of an FYI or any concerns, what have you. The only thing that I would pee that, would say that, and probably goes without saying, is the district is a priority, right? So in here, it already talks about June 5th and 6th. I initially thought of graduation, but there are other things that...
It's, tell me.
And then, Teri highlighted too, that one of the things we probably get into is that nondisclosure agreement. Let's just make sure it doesn't conflict with anything related to the district with that. As I said, I don't see an objection, but I'd like to put it out to the committee to see if there's any questions or concerns. I think it's a great step moving forward here.
I agree.
Okay. Teri?
I think it's, congratulations to you that they reached out to you. I just would like to see our legal team look at it and make sure that it doesn't get us in any situation.
Sure, absolutely.
But congratulations.
Thank you.
Quite nice.
The second thing is the video, and I swear I'll get you Bob. The video request, again, I see no objection, as long as no students are included in the video, right? And so that would be the only perspective there. Any questions, objection for that? Bob?
Yeah, did, we discussed having an exit interview for Cara. I don't know if that's, a date has been set yet or what?
No, we'll get that elsewhere to weigh, as far as that. Again, the goal is to not only get feedback from Cara in multiple groups, but also other members of the central office staff as well. So similarly, we did with the predecessor, just more of a complete pieces, and if anything we need to improve.
I know the committee was requesting it, so...
Bob, do you want to give a quick update on the senior breakfast?
Very well attended, I think, for the time of the year and the weather that we had, which was pretty cold. I think we had just under 50 people. It seemed like they enjoyed the food, they enjoyed the camaraderie even more, I think, because that's evidenced by the length of time they stay after they've eaten. So I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. I'd like to see more people partake of it. But it's something that I think we surely want to continue in the future, and it's done nothing but build good relations with the school system, so...
I'd like to figure out a way, is how do we broadcast this more?
We say it's Bob's senior breakfast. You're welcome.
Well, and I know that the attendance is through the Council of Aging in both towns. That's how we get our numbers, that's how they're going through that. But how do we broadcast this, you know, even if it's at the local churches or what have you, right? So it's just that...
I think that was the 10th one, and point out that Steve has been to everyone. So I congratulate him and thank him for all his attendance. He's bussing coffee and cleaning up tables and stuff like that.
Prides himself on his service.
I want to thank Andrea Fay for the work that she and her staff, Renee, for the work she did.
I personally thank her, and I always thank Renee for what she does, but, and the kitchen staff, I want to congratulate them too. So I think we covered all the bases with regard to that.
Great job. Teri?
Back to the exit interview. Thank you, Cara, for your services over the last few years. I'd like to see that exit interview set up before she starts her new job.
We can make sure that...
When do you start your new job?
May 1st.
And you're done tonight, or are you done on Friday?
Tomorrow afternoon. But I will be out of state for a while, so, you know, obviously we're going to have to work on that.
We'll coordinate for that. Again, as we discussed, it's an optional piece, you know, for that. Next committee meeting is April 26th. Any other business comments on the committee?
I hope it's warmer at the next meeting.
I know.
Greg? Budget season, all right. It is...
I will be sure that we, make sure the schedule is up to top. People ask, they elected to put the schedule on.
All right, it is 9:05. Entertained a motion to adjourn. So moved. I heard a motion in a second. I'll let Renee decipher who it was.
I got it.
All in favor?